I mean, it's 36, the last letter to the Guam is back from recess. Good afternoon, colleagues. At this time, we are looking at Bill Number 110-36COR. Speaker Theresa M. Turley, I will recognize you at this time on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move to accept the Bill Number 110, sorry, 110-36COR as substituted on the floor, which is an Act to amend, Section 41649, and to add a new 41649.1, both to Article 16, Chapter 4, Division 1, Title 26, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, to amend Section 67.308.1 of Article 3, Chapter 67, Title 9, and to amend Section 126050 of Article 6, Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing electronic transmission of prescriptions for Schedules 2, 3, 4, and 5 substances. The substitute bill includes technical changes to the title and section numbering. It also adds language to ensure that electronic transmission requirements only apply to controlled substances, as currently the Food and Drug Administration has its own set of rules for electronic prescriptions of non-controlled substances.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So on the motion to accept the substituted bill on the floor for Bill Number 110-36COR, is there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Speaker Turley, you still recognize?
Thank you very much. I'd like to move that to place Bill Number 110-36COR as substituted on the floor into the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Speaker Turley, please proceed.
Thank you. This bill is an effort to increase patient access to care and to decrease misuse of controlled This will allow the transmission of electronic prescriptions of controlled substances directly from prescribers to pharmacies. This process is already being used today for other prescriptions. Current law requires that patients must obtain a physical copy of a prescription for a controlled substance that are more highly regulated, and they must personally submit that prescription to the pharmacy and wait to acquire the medication. So the restriction against sending prescriptions electronically that we have in Guam law is preventing these patients from, well, it's causing a lot of inconvenience for them and making, most of these patients are suffering already, particularly from pain, debilitating pain, and it just, it really complicates their treatment by having them have to come in, pick up a prescription, take it personally over to the pharmacy, and then wait again. The, we've received testimony that that type of precaution is, it's no longer effective in combating the prescription misuse, which was, it was, you know, that was the original intent. That is no longer effective in that. It only makes it difficult for the patients in pain to obtain their medication. Physicians have testified in previous hearings on difficulties, that patients who are frail, they're physically ill, that they have with this process, including limited transportation and physical and medical conditions that make it difficult to withstand long hours waiting for prescriptions. This legislation is supported by the Department of Public Health and Social Services, with recommendations provided to them by the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, and it seeks, it continues to seek to prevent diversion and misuse of controlled substance prescriptions by reducing the incidence of prescription theft and forgery. This will also increase monitoring by the pharmacies through Department of Public Health and Social Services Prescription Monitoring Program, and it will reduce and prevent overuse and abuse of controlled substances, because physicians will also be able to know more immediately whether the same prescription is being prescribed somewhere else. We're trying to put these tools into the hands of the professionals to help them to prevent addiction that we are worried about, and to yet to increase access to care for those who are in need. So pharmacies on Guam already have the ability to electronically receive Schedules 3, 4, and 5 prescriptions, and they've been practicing this for several years, and we, so this bill will now include Schedule 2, and just make some other administrative technical changes to, to the current laws allowing Schedules 3, 4, and 5. It also is consistent with DEA regulations, so we are not going outside of that. In fact, we are becoming more consistent with nationwide practices where electronic prescription of controlled substance on Schedule 2 substances are mandated. So this bill will not mandate that they are electronically prescribed, because we do not feel that the providers are up, are, are all equipped with that type of capability here on Guam at this time, but this is mandated in many other states, so we are just going to allow it for now and hope that they will all convert to an electronic system. This type of system is also mandated under Medicare Part D, and it, they have put a, like a enforcement time as January 2022, when they want all of their providers who are prescribing these medicines, who are under that Medicare Part D, to also do that electronically. And they're all doing this, Madam Speaker, because they find it to be more reliable in, in terms of combating addiction and illicit drug use. This bill, there was one concern that was raised at the hearing where one of the physicians said this actually might be putting more burden on the physicians to make the calls to the pharmacies to find out where this medication actually is available. Right now, patients do this, but that same physician said that actually that's a benefit for the patients, because that is really one of the issues that they have. They pick up the physical prescription and have to physically go pharmacy to pharmacy to, to see if it's, if it can be filled at that pharmacy. First of all, if they have it in stock, and second of all, then, you know, all of that waiting time and transportation is what this, this will bring, this will make it much more convenient for them. So we're talking here about patients who need these drugs are, according to the testimony, they're are manomko. They are those who are very ill, severe pain, and those are exactly the patients that these providers have recommended to us, that we should not require them to do all that running around for this type of medication. So I would like to ask my colleagues for their support in this bill. I would like to thank the Department of Public Health and Social Services for their assistance and their consulting with the Drug Enforcement Administration and their testimony on this bill. I'd also like to thank Dr. Lauren Cabrera, who testified on a, on a previous bill, who actually brought this issue to our attention, and of course, Dr. Carla Haddock, who testified at the hearing on this bill, and was very helpful to the panel in being a provider and a prescriber of these types of controlled substances. She was very confident in assuring us that there are so many checks in the electronic system, that there, she, she even prefers it, because she can't make an error, right? There will be no errors, as sometimes there are errors in, in handwriting, there were errors in, you know, transmitting, but with this type of system that they use, or that is required if you're, if you're electronically prescribing controlled substances, that it really reduces the number of errors for the providers, and that, of course, is going to contribute to patient safety. So I want to thank her for her, her hands-on experience at that hearing. It was very helpful. And I, of course, want to thank my colleagues who attended the hearing, and in advance, to all my colleagues for their support of this bill. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Speaker Turley, anybody, anybody wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Frank Blas, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I stand in support of Bill 110-36, and I want to thank the author for introducing this measure. You know, several, I can actually say this, a couple decades ago, while working, you know, with the Drug Enforcement, as a task force agent with the Drug Enforcement Administration, I was unfortunate, I had the unfortunate privilege of having to work diversion investigation and assisting in diversion investigations, which included basically looking into the practices of pharmacies and the disposition of controlled substances, primarily Schedule 2s and 3s. And one of the things that we, of course, we had to combat back in those days was individuals who would be able to steal the scripts from the doctor's offices, and then in turn write out falsified scripts, take it to the pharmacies, and there was really no way of being able to ascertain whether or not these were falsified or not. And then you, what you had was, then you had Schedule 2 controlled substance pain relievers that were in the hands of, of drug addicts. What this bill will do is that it will substantially curb that possibility from happening. You know, one of these days, you want to hope that, according to, as was said by the author of the bill, sponsor of the bill, that this is not necessarily a mandate to the pharmaceutical or to the medical industry here on Guam, but it is the hope that one of these days, that that becomes the standard practice, more the norm than the exception. In this, it'll help to be able to accurately track, you know, who be, who's going to be able to obtain these prescriptions, who's prescribing these, these drugs, and, you know, there'll be a, by default, a database, if you will, so that you can be able to monitor who's getting it and for what reasons. This is something that should have been done earlier, and I'm just glad it's being done now. It'll help to curb that, and, but most importantly, as was stated by the author of the legislation, it would make it easier for those that direly and truly need this medication, for them to be able to obtain it. I've seen and I've heard on many occasions of individuals having to go from pharmacy to pharmacy looking for their prescription. Now, mind you, Madam Speaker, not every pharmacy has Schedule 2, Schedule 2 drugs, you know, in their, in their, in their inventory, and if they do, it's, it's fairly limited. And in some cases, you may have an individual who, you know, ordinarily go to one pharmacy just to find out that that pharmacy is out of that medication, and then have to go to other places. This would substantially greatly reduce that travel time, that wait time that they need as they're enduring the pain. So once again, I stand in support of this. I want to thank the author for being able to, I mean, to bring this to the floor for our, for our consideration, and I strongly urge our colleagues, please, to, to give this a consideration and vote yes on this measure. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Blas. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Clint, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for the author.
Please state your question.
If the author would so yield. Are the schedules in this bill the ones that are appended to Chapter 67?
Speaker Turley, would you like to yield?
I'm sorry if, if the author could, the mover could please repeat the question.
I'll ask him. Senator Rigel, can you please restate the question?
The schedules in this bill, do they copy the schedules that are appended to Chapter 67?
Yes, those are exactly the schedules we're talking about.
Thank you. Senator Clint, does that help?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author. I just wanted to clarify that. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Speaker Turley, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and I'd like to ask to add cosponsors to the bill or make a motion to add Senator Blas, Senator Brown, Senator Ada, Senator Taik Tukui, and Senator Rigel to, to be cosponsors. Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues, and Sisus Massey.
If you can.
Yes, I'll repeat my motion to, that Bill Number 110-36COR is substituted on the floor, be placed in third reading file.
On that motion to place Bill 110-36COR as substituted on the floor to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I moved to place Bill 104-36 as amended by the Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning, on the third reading file, and I wish to discuss. It's an Act to amend, Section 6703, 6802, 6805, and to add a new Section 6817, all of Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to payment requirements for cigarette stack, cigarette tax stamps.
Please proceed.
Okay. Bill, Bill Number 104-36 seeks to amend the cigarette stamp tax act in preparation of its implementation by supporting the implementation through Department of Revenue and Taxation. The measure refines public law 34, 34-55, ensuring all taxes due are paid at the time of purchase of stamps, and implements a future funding source for the public law. Bill 104-36, as amended, would do four things. It eliminates one of two delays inhibiting cigarette tax payments currently afforded to tobacco wholesalers by requiring the payment of cigarette stamps at the time of purchase. It also provides a delay of payments, subject to approval by the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but would have to be backed by a surety bond in the amount of payment. It also eliminates the 0.4% discount on stamps afforded to wholesalers after phasing out, after two-year phase-out. It also ensures a funding source for the continuity of the cigarette stamp tax law. As you know, with millions in unreported unpaid taxes noted by the Office of Public Accountability, the current cigarette stamp tax law allows for the continuity of tax deferment, and currently wholesalers are afforded the opportunity to place their tobacco products that arrive at the seaport into a botted warehouse, which delays the taxation of products, and then another delay occurs as a payment for stamps purchased are due to be paid in the following month. One of the reasons for the delay of the implementation of this act was the AG opinion had to be determined regarding whether the stamp is a double taxation. In their, in their opinion, their conclusion was that the stamp, payment of the stamps and the payment of the tax is not a double taxation, much like a recipient displaying taxes were paid on the products. Thus, requiring the payment of taxes represents, purchasing the stamps would indicate that the taxes have been paid, or that there's an assurance that taxes have, are guaranteed. Bill 104, the importance of Bill 104 is that it empowers DRT to collect taxes due when stamps are purchased, and allows for more efficient compliance and enforcement. This measure also creates a streamlined process upon which taxes are collected. Since the passing of public law 34-55, the cigarette stamp tax program has not been implemented. One is the questions about whether stamps was a double taxation. The other one was there was no funding source, continuous funding source. The legislative body put forth a mandate with no source of revenue to fund the procurement of a machine, the design of stamps, the purchase of supplies, or the issuing of stamps, and these are all new processes in tax collection, specific only to cigarettes with no specific funding source. In the previous term, the 35th Guam Legislature passed Public Law 35129, requiring DRT to issue an RFP for the enforcement of tobacco taxes. With Public Law 35129, the private party has an earning potential of up to 12% of tobacco tax collected in excess of the average monthly excise tax collected over the last three fiscal years. To put it plainly, if this private party were to collect 3 million more a month over prior fiscal years, they would be entitled to collect 4.3 million annually, funds which could have gone directly to the Healthy Futures Fund. Public Law 35129 is troubling, as it allows for the privatization of enforcement of collection. It's one thing for the government to hire a third party to collect, as a collection agency, to collect on behalf of the government on past debt, but the RFP in this public law is at issuance in the payment portion of the process. And if this were to succeed, Guam would receive the distinction as the only entity or jurisdiction in the U.S. to have privatized the enforcement. So the bill that is amended took into account the public testimony in regards to the 1% fee, so in lieu of that, the, the funding source would be from the taxes collected. So I thank my colleagues, I thank my sponsors, cosponsors for their support, and I look forward to a discussion on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the Bill 104-36, as amended by the committee, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Senator Duña, you're recognized, and then Senator Turley.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 104-36, and I want to thank the author for extending an opportunity for me to be a cosponsor of this legislation. Madam Chair, I think that the Madam Chair, I think that the author, you know, lined out everything that the bill is intending to do. And I thank the author also for taking into consideration, you know, testimony and incorporating that into the bill and amending the bill as presented today on the floor. It was kind of interesting in the public hearing, Madam Speaker, because I was very encouraged by the Attorney General's representatives and Assistant Attorney Generals in discussing that, for all intents and purposes, at least they've been able to move forward on purchasing of stamps. They were pretty much neutral on what the legislature would do, in terms of how we would move forward on whether or not, as the good author said, we would be one of the only, or the only jurisdiction to basically outsource a regulatory function. I'm very much opposed to that, Madam Speaker. I know that we've had some difficulties sometimes with several agencies, you know. We do a lot of work through the budget process and the like here at the legislature to try to, you know, give as much resources to our agencies, particularly our regulatory agencies, as needed to carry out their function. We're disappointed with performance at times, but I do believe, I believe in every single person up at Revenue Tax. I really do. I think they're dedicated employees. They're constantly put under a lot of pressure, sometimes with deadlines, timelines, and really a cumbersome mandate, particularly when we talk about, and in COVID nonetheless, during COVID, we talk about, you know, driver's licenses, registration, I mean, just some of the things, although it's really changed a lot, Madam Speaker. I know you've probably used some of the services recently. Their online efforts have been really, truly changing a lot of how the operation goes. So, they're doing good things, Madam Speaker. I don't think this task is far beyond them at all. I think they're up to this task. And I think that they probably understand as well how important it is, as the author stated, that we get every single dime of tax revenue for the benefit of Healthy Futures Fund and what actually we're supposed to be using the majority of those tax dollars for. So, Madam Speaker, once again, as I said, I think the Attorney General's Office has really done a good job by doing their part for the responsibility that they've had thus far. But I really believe, Madam Speaker, that our good folks at Revenue Tax can carry out this mission, can do it as part of their regulatory obligations. And in closing, I know my, I know the author also did mention, you know, there are instances, as a matter of fact, we just had GMH here, and we were quite surprised and satisfied that they were talking about how they could live within their budget ceiling, and actually was 10 million less than, you know, what they probably originally anticipated. And they talked about how they do have a collection agency, and that's appropriate. But I don't, I don't see that as what was prescribed by prior legislation. I see that as the government giving up revenue, where it could otherwise be used for very important purposes. And like I said, in closing, Madam Speaker, I'm very, very confident that our good folks up there at Revenue Tax can execute this mission and help our people going forward. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I hope that our colleagues will see it the same way, and I certainly will be voting in the affirmative for 104-36. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Duñez, Senator Terlahey, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 104 is an attempt to raise taxes for cigarettes and tobacco users who have been paying $4 tax on retail establishments since the inception of the law in 2018. Prior to that, they have been paying these taxes at different levels, but the residents have been paying the tax, and Revenue and Taxation has not been able to effectively collect them. The public auditor stated as much and said in a report, "We are under-collecting taxes by 10 to 15 million a year." The government's inability to collect said taxes should not require taxpayers to pay additional taxes. The increase of 4 cents per pack of cigarette is the same as increase as the business privilege tax increase my colleagues always speak about of that 1%. Last term, Madam Speaker, we passed Bill 35129, which required the Department of Revenue and Taxation to release an RFP to bid out the services of tax stamp to a private company that would be paid from the proceeds of tax stamp collections. This bill looks to undercut the program and give the responsibility back to Revenue and Taxation, which has not been able to effectively collect these taxes over the last decade. Madam Speaker, I propose that this bill should not be passed and allow the private contractor effectively to collect these taxes that are already charged to residents that choose to use tobacco products. Our residents are already struggling. They don't need to pay additional taxes. They need to use, to effectively collect those taxes and use them for the purpose they're meant for: better overall public health, better hospital, and to help those residents stricken with cancer. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope that we go back to that public law 35129, where the public auditor have, and that's what prompted me to really go into enveiguerating the collection of the stamp tax. Like what the auditor had mentioned, we are losing 10 to 15 million dollars a year. And if this particular bill passes, it would undercut the work that we have done in the past. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi, Senator, on the bill, Bill 104. Senator, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me an opportunity just to bring up some points about this and just hearing from the previous speaker, I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that it took forever for us to get where we're at today in reference to the tobacco/cigarette stamp law, and we are finally making progress. I do not want, Madam Speaker, to hamper that progress, as we are already mandated by the court and are ongoing with the procurement process as it is. I understand that DRT was not in favor of the original bill, and maybe have, have we heard from DRT, Madam Speaker, about their opinion about this current version of this amended version? Have we heard from the Department of Revenue and Taxation? Maybe I'll yield that to the main sponsor, if I may.
Would the sponsor yield to the question? Would you please repeat the question, Senator?
Is, have we heard from DRT about their opinion about this current version? As, if I'm not mistaken, there was a concern from DRT in that they did not support this effort. So, I just wanted to make sure. I know that the majority of those that presented testimony that day were all in objection to this, and I just wanted to make sure if there was an opinion that was garnered by them based on this amended version. Maybe we can give them a call and check. I don't know.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do yield to the question. And I think it's important to give some context, because even in the initial bill that was, they flip-flopped several times with how the implementation. So, I guess basically, maybe what I could say is that during the public hearing, they were, I guess the context was that they were under, there was a writ produced by the courts that DRT had to comply with public law 35129. And I think that's the context that we have to consider. I think what this bill would do, it would provide an alternate route to implementation, to collect taxes. So, at this point, they, yeah, during the public hearing, they were not in support, but I must say that prior to that, they were in support. So, and perhaps it had to do with the writ that they were under.
Madam Speaker, if I may, after hearing that, if it's okay with you, I just want you to know that as the author of the previous legislation to look at the collections, I just want to know, and I don't want to put blame on anybody, but there was many years that was provided for the department to go through and collect these fees. I remember in the 34th Guam Legislature Congressman Sinicless, Senator Sinicless then had introduced this legislation and literally gave an opportunity to see how we can collect these stamp taxes. And there was an offer of even up to 44% in the previous legislation at public law 35-121, that threshold even went even lower to give the opportunity for an RFP to go out. And as I said earlier, Madam Speaker, that this is where we're at today. And maybe I'm going to ask, Madam Speaker, even have to have a couple of minutes recess, and maybe I can talk to the author of this legislation and even call Revenue Tax to see where exactly it is, because there has been a writ by the Superior Court or by the court system to say that there's a mandate and you have to do it. So, in that effort, Madam Speaker, maybe you can allow me a brief or moment's recess, just to do some calling and just to make sure, because if I'm not mistaken, based on the testimony that was provided on this bill, as, not as the one that was amended, that there was concern and a number of oppositions to that. So, if you can just allow me a brief moment, Madam Speaker.
If we could, if it's okay with you to proceed with other speakers on the bill while we verify that information, we'll come back to you. Is that okay?
I have no problems then. I will go ahead and at least inquire to make those calls.
All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to be recognized on the bill? All right, we'll take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, in the interest of time and knowing that the number of times that this issue has been brought to the session floor dating back even before the 34th Guam Legislature, want to ask at this time that, so we can get clearer answers, is maybe do a motion to go into the Committee of Ho and bring in the stakeholders from the government, Department of Revenue Tax, Office of the Attorney General, see if we can, if OPA is allowed to come in based on that, BBMR, the Governor's Office, just to see where we're at. Because as we look at millions and millions of dollars that have been escaping our government coffers, I think it's important that we look at this. We were, again, granted the opportunity for the government of Guam to do this, and it has taken so many years. And as each term that we go through and we're having these taxes being escaped from our coffers, I think that it's important that we bring the parties in. Because, like I said earlier, my take is wanting to make sure that as government of Guam's main mission mandate is to provide for the basic services, got to make sure that if given that manpower, they're really going to do it. So, on a motion to go into the Committee of Ho and bring in the So on a motion to go into the Committee of the Whole and bring in the major stakeholders within GOV, government of Guam.
There's a motion to, notwithstanding the rules, revert to the Committee of the Whole. Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I believe a lot of the issues that were concerned during the public hearing were heard and addressed in this substituted version or this amended version. So Madam Speaker, I respectfully object.
There's been an objection. All in favor of the motion to go into, to move into the Committee of the Whole to consider Bill Number 104-36 as amended by the committee? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Vice Speaker, you still have the floor on the bill. All right, on the bill, Senator Taitigui, you have the floor.
Situs masa, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Hope you had a very nice lunch. Madam Speaker, it was mentioned a couple of times how far back this goes, this implementation of this type of program or process, in being able to capture tobacco tax. I think it was really apparent when the Office of OPA brought to our attention just how much money that we are losing from not keeping on our tabs with regards to taxes. In other words, cigarettes that are being pirated out there. It was in the millions that was being lost. Madam Speaker, I think what has happened in, in the last legislature as well as now what we're addressing today are areas that are of concern, I think concerned for me at least. Here we have an opportunity to provide the funding source needed for two agencies in the government of Guam. The Attorney General's Office, who enforces the law, and Rev. Tax, who's accountable for the funds coming in, those two entities. And how many times have we heard that there are always not enough people at Rev. Tax to do certain projects or even to keep in tabs that they only have one inspector that are able to do it? The Attorney General is so full, they have so much on their plate right now, they don't have the funds to be able to do this or to do their job. Don't get me wrong, they, they do the best they can, but it's because they don't have the resources to assist them. I remember at the very beginning when we were talking about legislation last year with regards to the cigarette stamp tax law. I remember when the deputy of Rev. Tax, who had done so much work, well, the former deputy, she actually moved to another agency in, in the Department of Rev. Tax, so excited about this that they were, they were on the last stretch. They had working with the Attorney General's Office, who received about $60,000 to assist them through a grant, or no, I believe it was funding through the legislature. And the opportunity to seek grants from other areas and other jurisdictions, they were watching Hawaii, if I'm not mistaken, and that what the process is through Hawaii. And then all of a sudden, we took a break, if I'm not mistaken, through lunch, and then it was almost like she couldn't say anymore about the process and almost to a point where she just kept quiet. It was like someone told her, don't say anything. Don't say anymore. To me, that sounded like special interest. Somebody was talking to her during lunch. And that's disturbing. Madam Speaker, this is an opportunity which is already in the making to move forward on capturing these taxes that we've lost. And that's what this legislation has done. It has addressed several concerns during the public hearing on the funding source. And I believe that the good author of this legislation corrected that. It's not another tax. It's using whatever's collected currently, and that five, one, what is it, 0.5% of that shall go to the Attorney General's Office for enforcement and then the other 0.5% to the Department of Rev. Tax. So, Madam Speaker, who has also mentioned about the two-year delay. And this is to assist those companies who distribute cigarettes to provide the funding needed to move forward on this tax, proposed tax program. And I think that's a good idea because the Attorney General said that they had enough money for the taxes, but the machines, they were thinking about asking the vendors to provide those machines. And if I'm not mistaken, there's something in, one of the testimonies brought up that it may cost these vendors about $100,000 to get these machines up and running to provide the stamp on their products. Madam Speaker, this bill is, if we're looking at trying to quickly get this up and running, this bill does that. If this bill was passed, the Attorney General can continue the work that they have been doing for the last year on implementing this tax requirement for, for the cigarettes. And it definitely, it'll provide the resources and the most needed, needed extra manpower needed at Rev. Tax to fulfill. Because Madam Speaker, wouldn't you rather see that funding going to our agencies than going to a third party? So Madam Speaker, this, it covers many of the questions and concerns during the public hearing was covered. The amendments were made, and I think they're great amendments to the original law. And I humbly ask this, if our intent is to try and get this up and running as fast as possible, this is the way to do it and fund our agencies at the same time. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this, on this bill. And I appreciate the author, all the work that she has done to try and find that win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do rise in support of Bill 104. I was not a member of the legislature last term, but I had to listen with interest when this bill was debated here in the Guam Legislature. I'm very much of the view that the regulatory authorities of the government should remain with the government. Of course, there are some things that we could probably outsource or, you know, enter into partnerships to help facilitate on behalf of our people. But in this particular case, the process, and I, I don't smoke, I have no interest in smoking, I don't import cigarettes into Guam. So for me, I, you know, it's not my thing. But, but for the government in particular, because decisions have been made that we're going to tax cigarettes coming into Guam and we're going to require, because of the concern, that revenues that should have been paid to the government were not paid to the government, be it because we didn't have the personnel there or somebody wasn't implementing the plan or whatever the case may be, it wasn't, it wasn't being executed as it should be. I'm very much am of the position in this particular case that this is a responsibility of the government. And it isn't that the government can't do it. We don't know why the government has chosen not to do it. And I don't know if it's a case on the private side as to why there's been such delays in making payment on these stamps. It's not a complicated process. I mean, I go into Happy Mart, Senator Frank Blas goes into Happy Mart, as we run into each other some frequency there. You know, where prices are put on commodity products in the store. It's not that difficult a process. But why hasn't it been happening? That's the question. Why has it not been happening? Rev. Tax has often come, no matter what administration, that's a common thing over the years of coming back and saying, you know, we want to follow up and do all these things, but we only have so many people to do them. And I certainly appreciate everything they're doing to help facilitate, to make it faster and things that we can do online. I just got my car registered a couple of days ago and I didn't even have to set one foot in Rev. Tax. Wonderful, because I'm in the last week of May. In this particular case, I, I never, I didn't understand when I was listening last year the justification of why we needed to have a third party come in, a third party that would profit from this process. I don't think it's necessary. I think the government has the responsibility to ensure that, since we require it, that these stamps be sold and that the parties that bring these, you know, cigarettes into Guam purchase these stamps and we have to ensure that they are placed on these cigarettes or packets or cartons or whichever the case may be, to ensure that these fees are paid to the government of Guam, to ensure these fees are paid to the people of Guam. You know, bonded warehouses are really supposed to be just an extension to allow, you know, and it's also a challenge Customs has because they're not able to do all their inspections at their point at the port. But you know, sometimes interesting things happening in bonded warehouses here on Guam. I remember a vehicle that was brought in through the port of Guam that contained, you know, illegal drugs. And the parties that needed to access that or their recipients of that drug, you know, they, they broke into the bonded warehouse and made away with their drugs before the authorities could get them. So sometimes I'm wondering, you know, is this the avenue, bringing it through bonded warehouses and then the taxes are not paid? Well, this is, you know, allowing this opportunity to help move these commodities and get them out there is one thing, but going around the process of not ensuring the taxes are paid is, is another. And I don't think that's something that we, we want to support. If we're going to go ahead and tax cigarettes, if we're going to want the monies to go into the Healthy Future Funds and other things because, you know, we feel hopefully that will discourage people, you know, to want to be healthier and not want to smoke at all, even though I see that as a trend of more people these days, I don't know the numbers on Guam, but most of the people I know don't smoke anymore. But nevertheless, this is a regulatory responsibility of the government. I think the government needs to maintain that responsibility. I think we need to stay on top to make sure that they follow through with it because it's not a complicated process. I don't see how it could be a complicated process. And providing the resources and the funding through this to assist, as you know Senator Tello had mentioned, to assist Rev. Tax and then also to assist the Attorney General's Office to follow up on their respective responsibilities. And of course, our public auditor, I'm sure will follow up to make sure that these taxes are properly paid. I think that's a fair and reasonable expectation as all of us, you know, who have to pay taxes for the revenue that we receive. This is not an extraordinary responsibility, but it's one the government should be able to execute and enforce. So with that, I rise in support of Bill 104. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 104-36 as amended by the committee, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized Senator Shelton? What? On Bill Number 104, anyone wishing to speak?
Thank you very much. I rise in support of Bill 104-36, especially as amended by the committee. I believe that the committee addressed almost all, if not all, of the concerns that were raised at the public hearing. And I think came up with a very good way to continue the intent of this bill in the first place. Now, we all know that we have in place a tobacco stamp process, that we have been waiting for the Department of Revenue and Taxation to implement that process. Last year, there was a law passed to change that process so that a private company would instead, or it was an option, that a private company could be enlisted to assist Revenue and Taxation in enforcing our tobacco laws, tobacco tax laws. This bill amends our current laws regarding tobacco cigarettes tax stamps. And I think in some very simple ways. First of all, it changes the payment date for the stamps. So whatever the process, tobacco companies, wholesale companies have to pay for the stamps and the stamps have to be put on the product. Payment of the stamps, according to this bill, will be paid at the point of purchase, at the time of purchase, and no longer payable at the 20th day of the month following purchase. And there didn't seem to be much objection to this part of this bill at the public hearing that we're going to pay promptly. I think everybody agreed that that would just make it a very much more efficient process. They pay, pay upon use of these tobacco stamps. In fact, the bill allows for a delayed payment. If a company wants that and wants to request that, they have to be in good standing with the Department of Revenue and Tax, in terms of tax liability. And they have to, those who are granted, they have to put up a bond and those who are granted an extension on that payment are only allowed an extension up to the calendar month following the purchase, the 20th day. So it'll be like 30 plus 20 days, the way I'm calculating it, about 50 days delay in payment with a bond and with clear tax liabilities. I think that's a convenience for the wholesalers that is provided here. And there was no objection to that part of this bill either at the public hearing. There are penalties put in place for non-payment, and there was, seemed to be no objection to those parts of this bill at the public hearing either. The bill as amended, the bill as amended provides that there is a cigarette stamp tax fund. This is a newly created fund created by this bill, and it would be separated and apart from all funds and of course. And the goal of this is that payments made to buy the tobacco stamps are going to be put into this fund and used for this program. That's 1% of the taxes collected under this chapter. It's 1% of pretty much what we consider to be our Healthy Futures Fund, our taxes on, these products. They calculated it to be about $41 million that we collect. And so I think that's where they get the estimate of about $400,000 would be. would be set aside, put into this fund in order to operate this program. And these funds would go half towards the Department of Revenue and Taxation and half towards the Office of the Attorney General. And the Office of the Attorney General was at the public hearing in full support of this bill, saying that they are going to help to implement or to enforce, that they see it as their role to enforce tobacco, tobacco stamp tax law and of course violations of it. And so they were very willing to be involved and they are assisting the Department of Revenue and Taxation at this time and helping to contribute some of the funds to purchase the equipment for the stamps or the stamps itself. And of course, the 0.5% that's going to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, I think is calculated to be 300,000 to 400,000, if I'm calculating that correct. But in, it's not more than that for sure. And what we had heard in previous, testimony on previous laws is that that is exactly what the Department of Revenue and Taxation needs. That is exactly what they had complained about before, why they're not able to implement this law is because they need that amount of money for a person to dedicate themselves to this program, for a person to work with the Attorney General on this program and to ensure that they could continue with the enforcement. This amount of money, I think it's, it's a loss, of course, to the Healthy Futures Funds, which we are currently allocating to other programs in the government. And, you know, of course, I thought about that a lot. But $300,000 to $400,000 being allocated to the Department of Revenue and Taxation to collect what the auditor estimated to be 10 to 15 million dollars in lost revenue. For me, it's, it's like a no-brainer. It's, it's an easy decision. Of course, I will dedicate $300,000 to collect 10 to 15 million dollars. And all testimony and prior laws was all, was very consistent that putting a stamp on those products is going to make enforcement hugely, much easier because of that visual impact that the enforcers will have to their advantage. This is how we are going to protect legitimate companies from black market products, black market sales, 10 to 15 million dollars worth. The amendments to the bill that have been made addressed concerns by some of the companies, wholesalers that were testifying that there would be an additional tax. And the Attorney General has clarified there is no additional tax. They've even clarified that there is, that because this, this percentage is coming out of the, the current collection of taxes, I think it's even more convenient for the wholesalers at this point. And I think it removed or resolved most of the objections to the bill during that hearing. I did ask the Attorney General at the hearing if this bill would interfere with the current bid process. And they said it would not. And I think that they, if I read the news correctly, they, they presented to the courts that their current process is on target with the law. It is consistent with the law. They are implementing the law. And that they are doing it in, in a, I think, an efficient way at this point because they are using, you know, $600,000 to start, to start this process off. And that their efforts, they, they testify would bring this program closer to, you know, complete fruition. I have been asked not to support this bill for one reason really, and that is because, you know, we should all, because of the fact that Revenue and Taxation has not been able to successfully put stamps on these products up to now, that they are completely incompetent or unwilling to do that. And for that reason, we should pay $5 million to another company to do that. What we could pay, $300,000 to $400,000 to the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Attorney General of Guam to do. I am not giving up on the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And unfortunately, I'm going to say that we have seen many of the successes during this pandemic because of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. But when it comes to this bill and tobacco taxes, there seems to be a gap. I'm, I'm, I will admit that. And, but they told us back in the 34th Guam Legislature when we were passing the original tax stamp law, that if we were going to pass that law, they needed the resources to implement it. They were not given those resources at that time. And so we came back two years later blasting them for not implementing that law. And the AG suggested that they are going to give $600,000 and they would be able to start implementing that law. But we changed the law and we gave it, you know, we wanted to give $5 million to a third party to take over tax collections for the government of Guam, to take over tax enforcement for the government of Guam and to, you know, put stamps on these products because we will not give $300,000 to $400,000 to the Department of Revenue and Taxation to do that. Well, I'm not giving up on the Department of Revenue and Taxation despite, you know, I'm at the last hearing, the deputy director coming in and he did not seem enthusiastic about implementing this law. Even at that time, he did not seem as if that was his first priority. In fact, he had told us at the time, he had to leave because he had to go to another hearing for something else. And I was shocked. But that's probably an attitude issue that we have at the Department of Revenue and Taxation with certain employees. But I do not want to attribute that to the entire department because as I've said, we have seen some of our greatest successes in this pandemic at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And they could definitely, you know, improve, of course. And they must improve. And they have, you know, incentive to improve and that is the collection of 10 to 15 million dollars. And I, you know, it's, it's pretty mind-blowing that they do not make this their first priority, especially with the assistance that they are getting from the Attorney General's office at this point. Especially after the opinions have been done and there have been no barriers anymore to implementing this program. But again, I think the author of the bill has made a very good, some, made some very good amendments, or the committee has made some very good amendments to this bill to make it a much more efficient process, to remove any further undue burdens on these wholesalers. It makes it very convenient for them. It takes the 1% cost out of current taxes. And it gives this money and puts it into a fund. It's, it's protected and it's going to be used exactly for those purposes, split between the Attorney General's office and the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And they have promised that they are moving on this program. I think it's a lot, I want to commend the Department of, I mean, the Attorney General's office for their efforts to really push this program along as well. And, and of course, I just think it's for the benefit of all of us. So this bill will help it to move along. It does not impede that in any way. It does not. It just continues the current program, except specifies that payment for taxes are paid on the date of purchase and it makes this fund separate and apart and available for use exactly for these purposes again, for the tax stamp law purposes. So I'm going to thank the sponsor of the bill and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terahy. Anyone else wishing to speak on the bill? Senator Joe Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a few questions that maybe the, hopefully the author would yield to the questions. First one is number one, what is the effective date of this bill? Or are we just assume that upon passage and the governor signs immediately, it's effective? I don't know if she would answer it or legal would answer it or whoever may choose to answer it.
Thank you, Senator Sabina, Senator Perez, do you yield to the question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I do yield to the question. Yeah, the, the retiring speaker does raise a good point about implementation. And I think being that the cigarette stamp tax hasn't been implemented for, since 2018, I believe, I, I think it's important to ensure that it gets implemented as quickly as possible. And I know currently, the, the Office of Attorney General is preparing the IFB. So if we implemented upon enactment or upon signage, passage into law, signage into law, that would definitely go to help support their current efforts right now. So in regards to ensuring that purchase of stamps is done.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Sinagastin?
So the effective date is when? I just want to know the effective date of Bill 104. That's all I want to know.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's upon enactment.
Madam Speaker, if the author would yield to another question, I appreciate it. It's in reference to, do you know if there's any stamps available today? That vendors are going to ask for permission to delay or whatever excuse that were, is effective immediately? If the stamps are available?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do yield. So that, that is a good point. And I believe that would happen, the supply would be available upon the appropriate selection of the contractor who, who supplies the stamps.
Senator Sinagastin?
So in other words, the stamps are not available today. If this bill passes today, and it's not likely the governor's going to sign it today, but the stamps won't be available. This I know for a fact, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues. The stamps are not available. The ISP just went out. They're hoping for a response. Then it goes to the vendors and then they decide if, if, if they agree and if there's any protest to the stamp design and so forth. I'm just curious because I can see this bill, if it's passed, the effective date would be no different than the previous bills that passed. It's not ready to be implemented. So the enforcement part will just be a delay. And I'm just concerned that, and the reason why I know this, because I spoke to the AG's office on my way in. And that's why I was delayed coming in. I was trying to get some information so I can wrap myself around this. And then the next thing, I think I overheard on the YouTube, that this would increase the price of cigarettes. Coincidentally, there's only two of us in this body that smokes. And I don't know, I support it. Four years ago, we increased the price of cigarettes. I'm not in support of any increase of cigarettes anymore until we make sure that we're enforcing all the laws that governs the purchase and sale of cigarettes. So I'm only concerned is that there are some shortfalls in the bill. I have no problem enforcing. Speaker mentioned earlier, the Department of Revenue and Taxation has done everything they could. This year, during the pandemic, they did remarkable things. This thing happened to drop through the cracks and one of the major faults was the support that they finally got now from the Attorney General's office. Issue with the Attorney General's office, their concern is that if there's no additional funding provided to Revenue and Tax to make sure that this program continues, it doesn't matter what the bill looks like. But this body will decide it, decide that budget issue when we start discussing the budget. When there's a budget issue of any agency and we try to pass any bill that's going to affect them, if we don't back it with funding when we get to the budget, then we set it up for failure. So with that note, Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm not totally in support of this bill at this, at this time, until everything is covered. Because when we get to the budget part, if there's no money, nothing's going to move. In any agency, whatever program they have, if we don't sit down and we all come to an agreement that certain things, because I will be briefing everybody when we go to the budget session, you pass this law. Where do you want to get this money? You pass this law. And we're going to go to that scenario when we start the budget. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 104 as amended, Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of Bill 104-36 as amended. And I thank the author for her due diligence in the committee's work in addressing the issues that were brought up during the public hearing. I think it's important to know that the, the outstanding taxes that, or the, the taxes that are not collected because of this, the tax law that, it just goes to show that whenever we can try to do something to ensure that the seepage of taxes is either prevented or stopped completely, then we can at least know that we're doing something for the government to continue to collect revenues. We're going to be having interesting times in the, in the next several months. Who knows in the next couple of years. And I think that collecting revenues is going to be very important to our government. And again, I thank the, the author for doing the, her best and the committee to ensure that we can get this program implemented and moving forward so that we can go ahead and start collecting the revenues that perhaps were uncollected previously. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 104 as amended, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, I invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to make something very clear, that the introduced version is very different from the amended version. In the introduced version, there was a 1% fee, which received the ire of many of the people giving testimony there, that it was considered a tax increase. So having heard their pleas, the amended version removed that. They removed the 1% fee. And instead of that, in order to ensure the program has a funding source, that 1% would be taken from the taxes collected. So again, it is not an increase in taxes. I just want to make that super clear. So I think, you know, as a body, we have the obligation and perhaps the, the leadership to establish policy for our government. And what Bill 104 does, it positions the policy in regards to, so I guess the question we have is to privatize or not to privatize enforcement of cigarette stamp taxes. And I think this body has an important obligation to ensure that we are not the only jurisdiction in the United States or to have this distinction as being the only distinction to have privatized the enforcement of cigarettes or tobacco taxes. And we saw, we've heard the testimony from the previous term and this term regarding what the differences are. And one of them is the cost. To keep it in-house, the estimated cost would be about $300,000 to $400,000. To privatize, up to 12% of the taxes collected. To privatize, up to 12% of the taxes collected. And so with the, this is all to address the master settlement agreement, which we're required to enforce, and also to ensure proper enforcement is done. And so, the OPA audit that was referred to earlier stated that we are possibly losing $23.4 million of uncollected tobacco taxes, because of the lack of implementation of cigarette stamps. And I have information for you today, that the RFP will cost $17 million of that $23.5 million. This was filed with the court in response to the writ. So $17 million off the bat going to privatization. And as you heard in previous budget hearings, we are short $17 million for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. So we have a choice. Do we use that $17 million to go to a private contractor, to enforce something which we can do at much lower cost at $400,000? Or do we use that $17 million to go to our agencies, especially during this pandemic? This is the cost of privatization. We know we need to fund Department of Public Health and Social Services for many reasons. You know, our lives are at stake, especially during this pandemic. You know, we have high rates of cancers, high rates of diabetes. We need that to go to support our health agencies. And that's what this body is doing, is we have the power to determine what policy we are going to set forth. Do we prioritize our health? Or do we prioritize privatization of tobacco enforcement collection? And that's what this Bill 104 does, it gives DRT a fighting chance. Right now, they're under court order to enforce a privatized model. But what Bill 104 would do, it would give them more power to enforce something for the better of our society. So I ask the support of my colleagues for this bill, and say that, you know, we do support our enforcement with DRT. And we can do, we can do it. I truly believe that Department of Revenue and Taxation can do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place Bill Number 104 as amended by the committee to the third reading, is there any objection? There is an objection on that motion. All in favor, please raise, pardon? There is an objection. There's one call for roll call. Two calls for roll call. On the motion, all in favor, please raise your hand. If you're in favor of moving the Bill 104-36 as amended by the committee to the third reading file. I only heard two. Are there, third, there's a third call for roll call. We'll do a roll call vote. Is there a point of order? Please rise and state your point of order.
Point of order, Madam Speaker, I think just dispense of the, I think we need to dispense of the roll call.
Yes, there's been three calls for roll call, so we are going to proceed with a roll call vote pursuant to our standing rules. Is there a point of order? Please state your point of order.
We're reporting of inquiry, Madam Speaker. With one person missing today, can we require that individual to show up for the, for this vote? Or? The call of the House?
Are you asking for a call of the House?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have a member missing.
There's a motion for a call of the House. All in favor of a call of the House, please raise your hand. Motion fails. This is on the motion to place Bill Number 104-36 as amended by the committee on the third reading file.
Madam Speaker, just so we're clear, the vote is whether or not to send it down when we're voting.
That's correct. We're voting on a motion to place Bill Number 104-36 as amended by the committee on the third reading folder, to move it from second reading to third reading.
So by voting affirmative, you're voting to send it down?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure.
Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas? Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown? Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius? Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes? Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Nelson? Madam Speaker, motion to excuse those members not present, please. On the motion to excuse members not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Nelson, excused. Senator Perez? Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel? Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin? Senator Sinagastin, nay. Senator Shelton? Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Tidegui? Senator Tidegui, aye. Senator Terlachy? Senator Terlachy, nay. Speaker Terlachy? Speaker Terlachy, aye. Senator Torres? Motion to place Bill 104-36 on the third reading file received eight, yea, and six, nay votes, and one excused, motion passes. We're still on the second reading. We are now on Bill Number 87-36. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
I move to place Bill Number 87-36 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Self-Determination and Historic Preservation, Infrastructure, Border Safety, Federal and Foreign Affairs, and Maritime Transportation, introduced by myself, Mary Camato Torres. Senator Talina Cruz Nelson and Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes into the third reading file. This is an act to add a new Article IV to Chapter 73, Division 7, Title V, Guam Code annotated, and to amend Section 6603(c), Article VI, Chapter 6, Title XI, Guam Code annotated, and to further repeal 6604, Article VI, Chapter 6, Title XI, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing asset forfeiture for the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, and to further establishing a customs local forfeiture account. And if I may speak on the measure?
Please proceed.
Bill 87 seeks to stem the tide of drug abuse by enabling Guam Customs to become self-sufficient. If enacted, the measure would authorize the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency to take possession and title of seized property through asset forfeiture. Despite being our first line of defense, the Guam Customs has limited forfeiture control under our laws. Right now, Guam Customs may utilize assets from tobacco products imported in violation of 11 GCA Chapter 6, Article 6, which is the Tobacco Control Act. However, the funds from this niche account must be used solely for electronic equipment to monitor the importation of these products. Any other portions of proceeds that Customs receive is through equitable sharing with federal partners under the U.S. Department of Justice. In short, Customs is not imbued with the power to fully enforce screening at our borders. Madam Speaker, local authorization to asset forfeiture is necessary, given the continued shortfall on Customs operations. An analysis of the CQA's budget over the last four years shows a steady decline from $15.4 million in fiscal year 17 to $11.4 million in fiscal year 21. This reduction in Customs budget is contrary to the mission and mandate of the agency. As a recent report by the University of Guam Regional Public Policy Center stated, Guam Customs was designed by law to be self-sustaining agency that is autonomous from the general fund and immune to the fiscal climate of the rest of the government. It was not only given the power to generate its own funding, it was given the responsibility to adjust its revenue streams to continue to meet operational costs throughout time. However, as evident in the continued public discussions of manpower and funding shortage, CQA does not live up to the expectation of being self-sustaining. We have already seen the benefits of asset forfeiture through Guam's partnership with federal entities. According to Director Paredo, a total of $642,209 was reverted back to the agency in 2012. And in 2014, another asset sharing in the amount of $63,272 was afforded to the agency. Implementing a procedure here would therefore allow the agency proceeds on both the local and federal front. While the majority of cases that are being mitigated are adopted by federal entities, Customs envisions more cases being handled locally versus handing them over to federal partners if this bill passes. Under Bill 87, all proceeds would be set aside in local asset fund to be utilized exclusively by the agency. This would open the door for future hires of personnel, training, enhancement of facilities, purchasing of equipment, and other needs. At this time, I'd like to take a moment, Madam Speaker, to note some of the amendments that I made with the committee chair following the public hearing. The first is to specify the various chapters in the code where Customs and Quarantine draws its authority. These are specifically like Title IX, Chapter 7, 67, which is the Guam Uniform Controlled Substance Act. Chapter 11, I mean Title XI, Chapter 6, the Tobacco Control Act of 2009. And Title IX, Chapter 47, which is the trademark counterfeiting act. This will ensure that the process for mitigation of assets, this, I'm sorry, is to prevent the overlap in GPD's forfeiture authority that is found in IX GCA, Chapter 67, while still permitting flexibility for Customs and Quarantine. Further, to ensure that there are no jurisdictional issues with the Guam Police Department, I also added a new section that mandates the promulgation of rules and regulations. This will ensure that the process for mitigation of assets is delineated and approved by the Attorney General of Guam prior to proceeding. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and raise in support of Bill Number 87-36 COR. And if I can share that I believe that the intent of this bill is to grant the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency forfeiture authority to take possession and title of property, and the creation of a local asset forfeiture fund to be known as the Customs Local Forfeiture Account, to set aside proceeds from the property to be utilized for personnel, for training, enhancement of facilities, and purchasing of equipment. And I want to share, Madam Speaker, that this is similar to that of the Guam Police Department's Forfeiture Fund. I believe that this bill is a good bill. I thank the author from Santa Rita for introducing this. The reason why this bill is necessary, I think that this can literally weaken the criminal enterprise that thrive from jurisdiction with limited statutory authority. And I want to note, Madam Speaker, that the fiscal note that was provided to the legislature states that BBMR states that the forfeiture account would have a positive impact on Customs and Quarantine in performing its duties. It should also be noted that this is currently a federal asset forfeiture account and is being utilized by the CQA. BBMR also notes that without any additional information, they are unable to determine the amount of revenues this legislation would generate. As I'm reading that, Madam Speaker, I know that as we continue to provide resources to Customs and Quarantine for the work that they do, it's only fair that based on what's already successful in other law enforcement activity, we afforded the opportunity for Customs and Quarantine to have their own. This is, Madam Speaker, for me, a very good opportunity for Customs to continue to receive the much-needed funding source, especially when they do the work that, and the properties that are seized would be going into something for them. Like I said earlier, training, enhancement of the facilities, utilized for personnel, and making sure that they have the necessary equipment. So I want to thank the good author from Santa Rita for giving me the opportunity to support this effort. More importantly, I ask that my colleagues please help us support this effort, as Customs and Quarantine would really do good by having this fund for them. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi. On Bill 87-36 COR as amended by the committees, would anyone like to be recognized? Senator Sinagastin?
Maybe this is another simple question. What is the effective date?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I'll yield. The effective date is upon enactment into law, and I do want to note, though, that there still will be a requirement for them to promulgate rules and regs. So the full implementation- So the full implementation of and setup of the account will depend on those other areas being formulated. But more or less, to the question, it's ASAP.
Madam Speaker, maybe the author or the co-sponsor... the author can answer is that if we're looking at rules and regulation to be formulated, you don't know how they do in the process. Just a reminder, I worked at Revenue and Tax, I understand forfeiture and confiscation and all that. And I was a former police officer. We do that every day. It's a normal process. But we had rules in place already. So it was easier to confiscate things. I just wanted to make sure that when they start confiscating, because Customs does a lot of that, that's the normal process up there. They check a bag, they find something, take it, they go to the process, to go to the court. If it deals in alcohol, they call Revenue and Tax, they give it to Revenue and Tax, they walk away. Certain things go to different agencies. And maybe I invite the author to maybe just put the effective date and I'll write it. But if the author could do it and then say that in compliance, and soon as the rules and regulation is imposed, they can do additional items, but at least they know the rules of engagement. Number one, you find it today, if the bill passes and it's law, you find it today, you can take it. But make sure we got the rules and regulations, we cover it. Because I hate to see this in court. Somebody confiscates some property for Customs, they think they can make money out of it, and then they find out that they're being sued because it was an illegal pursuit. There's a lot of things that happen, man. Thank you, Madam Speaker. But I do support the intent of the bill.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 87-36, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? If not, I will call in the sponsor of the bill to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to note on the last point that was made by one of my colleagues, that the rules and regulations will be promulgated in accordance with the AAA process. And in closing, I also want to take this time to thank Director Paredo and the Guam Customs team for working extensively with me on this bill. I also want to acknowledge the University of Guam Regional Public Policy for issuing their report on the state of the agency in 2019. Bill 87 is modeled after the university's careful research, interviews with their agency, and their recommendation to establish a local asset fund. At a time when our streets are flooded with illegal drugs, we must explore every avenue to assist Guam Customs in dismantling the supply. Asset forfeiture is a powerful law enforcement tool to generate additional revenue for Customs and ensure that criminals don't profit from their crimes. I look forward to support on this bill. And at this time, I'd also like to add as co-sponsors Senators Joe Sinagastin and Senator Pedro Terlaj.
On the motion to add co-sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. On the motion to place Bill Number 87-36COR as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I would like to request that we go back to motions.
On the motion to return to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, the purpose of going to motions is I'd like to move...
We are in motions now?
Sure.
Okay. Senator Duñez?
And I am, yes, explaining why I've asked to go to motions. I would like to move vetoed Bill 1136 by E. Magahagan Guahan into the file for consideration of override.
On the motion, please proceed.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to ask this august body to consider and to vote to override Bill 1136, which was vetoed by the governor. Madam Speaker, I think it's important, as I make this plea to this body, that once again we understand what the bill does and what it doesn't do. Madam Speaker, this bill does not, in any way, prevent our governor or any governor in the future from declaring a public health emergency. This bill, as amended by this body several months ago, a very responsible amendment, basically put in place 90 days from when the governor declares a public health emergency. 90 days for that emergency to be in effect under, of course, what is done by executive order. And my good colleague who moved that amendment, I really appreciate her military experience and the reason for saying why 90 days is important, particularly when it comes to going to battle, establishing a battle rhythm. And essentially, after that 90 days, Madam Speaker, then subsequent, every 30 days, the governor would be required to come down to this legislature and compel us to continue the proposal of extending the public health emergency. If not, it would be terminated. Madam Speaker, I've seen, and you've seen, and many of us have seen, month after month after month, for what would be going on if another public health emergency is declared next week, approaching 14 months, under a declaration of public health emergency. Certainly, once again, as a review, we knew that when this pandemic hit, it was novel, it was something that we didn't understand, and the whole world was brought to its knees. But once again, we're here now, and I have to say, at least within the last several months, when I've been reading the executive orders that have been issued for the public health emergency, I'm a little perplexed. I see some revisions in terms of restaurants going to 75% capacity, certain activities' limits raised, you know, convention halls and the like to 100 persons. Those are all good things, Madam Speaker. But I think our public, and particularly our businesses, and those who had been frustrated after six to eight months by the continuation of the public health emergency, wanted to have their voice heard more so in this process. And while I'm sure there was a medical and a science-based reasoning behind some of the decisions, perhaps, I think that there are differing opinions with regard to that. And the least we could do is hear it out. Madam Speaker, one of the main objections from the governor through communications, and even her communications in several media outlets when Bill 11 was introduced, and particularly when it was heard in the public hearing, was, you know, if the legislature wants to shut down a public health emergency, they have the power. Eight votes on a resolution, done. Emergency over. Of course, the governor could issue an executive order minutes later, restarting one. But is that the process we want to go through? I don't think so, Madam Speaker. It's not a process I want to engage in. I'm not saying I wouldn't do it if we had to, but I just don't think that that's the right thing to do. You know, it seems like to me, particularly when we joined recently in the case in the Supreme Court whereby the governor sought declaratory judgment on the issue surrounding quarantine and her emergency powers, a lot of the back and forth was essentially, I just don't like this chapter. Why am the emergency powers? And I just don't think that that was the intent over two decades ago, when the legislation was introduced and passed by this body when it pertains to public health emergency. I believe the chapter as written is liberal enough that the governor has the authority to do what needs done, but I think there has to be certainly a measure of accountability to it. This is an appropriate argument at this point, Madam Speaker, that the governor and public health had been overruled time and time again by the courts, by a judge, saying, you haven't done this right. You haven't given these folks who are placed into quarantine due process. That's a big deal, Madam Speaker. Now, I get it. I read the JIC reports. I know that there are those who are in quarantine, who test positive, and even are placed in isolation facilities. That's true, Madam Speaker. But there's also right now about 70 or 80 people who are quarantined at home, who are getting the same phone calls that I got when I contracted COVID. Thank God I survived, just to show you how aware I am of the dangers of this pandemic. But like clockwork, Madam Speaker, public health called me right around nine some in the morning. How you doing, sir? Good. Need anything? No. How are your symptoms? I got a headache, body hurts, but everything's okay. Family's got food for me, I'm good to go. I got everything here at the house that I need. Thanks for checking in. 4:30 in the afternoon, same thing. You didn't leave the house, right? Nope, not going anywhere. I mean, yeah, I didn't have guard troops outside of my house, and I didn't have a policeman to make sure I didn't go anywhere, but I'm a good citizen. I care about our people. Last thing I would want to do is injure anyone or make anybody susceptible. So yes, that's a good argument. We're going to spend this money, we're going to have this quarantine, but due process and the rights of the individuals, time and time again, the court said, no, you can't do it that way. And that's what we're arguing about. There are those, Madam Speaker, as of late, prominent business individuals, people who are trying to get our economy back on track, that have said now, it's time to open up Guam 100%. Now, I know, once again, Madam Speaker, that is going to be a contentious discussion, but it's one that should be had. And it's one that should be had here, Madam Speaker. As I move to close on asking this body to reconsider and to join me in the override of the governor's veto on Bill 11, I know also, some that I've had personal discussions with that had some difficulty with Bill 11 in the beginning, had said to me that they believed that this body just didn't act, sometimes with alacrity, with the proper, you know, diligence to do things that required quick action. That may be a reasonable argument, but Madam Speaker, I share that when we, in this body, voted by 15 votes, I think we might be onto a record here, Madam Speaker, to where in the first few months of the 36 Guam legislature or any legislature, we now have two resolutions that we passed with 15 votes. We recently sat down, when asked by the governor over a couple of weeks, and came up with a pretty comprehensive plan that we're going to have a hearing on June 4, on our recommendations for the use of over $600 million in ARP funding. That was pretty quick. I think that this body can act anytime it needs to, with whatever alacrity required when we're looking at issues of grave public interest. You know, running and being elected, running and being elected in the office provides for a really nice pincushion, and it's okay. I mean, that's what you get involved in when you put yourself out there. So I understand when we hear from the public on their discontent with some of the things we do, some of the things we don't do. It's the nature of, well, we do. A good friend of mine said, you know, Chris, if you want to make everybody happy, sell ice cream. That's the best job you could have in the world, where I have never met anybody that doesn't like ice cream. But Madam Speaker, I still say, regardless of sometimes my colleagues having differences with me and me having differences with them, I still trust that this body can do the work it needs to do when called upon. I don't think it's too cumbersome or too hard to, in the second week of a month before the 30th day of a month, to introduce a resolution, to hear voices on that resolution, and then to move forward and see, maybe if the public health emergency is not to be shut down altogether, maybe there are adjustments that the governor and their team didn't see. This is where the people speak. This house belongs to the people. It's been mentioned by the governor before, pick up the phone and give me a call. Chris, I'd love to do that. I like talking on the phone. I like text messaging to communicate. But that's not what this is about. The people, the Guam, when their voice is heard, businesses want their voices heard, churches want their voices heard. I meant to print it out, and I didn't do it, but I'm going to say it because I know it's true enough. If I have to back it up, that's fine. I believe it's the governor of Pennsylvania. Anyways, there was a governor in one of the 50 states recently. I had that article, and I forgot to print it out, whose emergency powers were stripped because the public was outraged that abortion clinics were allowed to operate, but churches were shut down. Now, I know that that's not what happened here, but I do know that our... Now, I know that that's not what happened here, but I do know that our churches had to get pretty loud in order for our people to be able to worship. They didn't have the luxury of a public hearing. They couldn't come down here because the public health emergency was going to be debated after months and months and months. Certain brave priests and other evangelical ministers started to get on the media and say that it's, yes, there is a delineation between church and state, and the church has the right to worship. People have the right to worship. They prevailed, Madam Speaker. Churches were open, because even before they were allowed to open, they were submitting their plans. This is what we're doing. We're going to comply. We're not saying no holds barred. We're saying we want to worship until today. Every Sunday that I go to Mass, those ropes are in between pews. It's so sophisticated that when I walk through the door, the computers already read me, and I have to, I stand there, and they tell me to keep moving, because I'm already approved. I can go worship. So, Madam Speaker, things like that. Once again, this bill establishes that the first 90 days, no consideration. Do what you got to do. After that, come and work with us. We want to work with you. This is not about our current Magahaga. This is about any governor going forward that, God forbid, has to deal with a pandemic, but then also a people who will have to deal with the implications of restrictions, albeit more than likely necessary every time, but after a certain time. As many states and territories have been grappling with their governors in the last several months, after time, there's going to have to be a time to sit down and talk about it. That's what this bill does, Madam Speaker. So I pray that I'll be able to get the votes necessary, notwithstanding the objections of the governor, to override her veto on Bill 1136. Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Maasi, Senator. On the motion, it's a motion to override Bill number 11-36 COR, to place that in the voting file for today. On that motion, this is your opportunity to discuss it. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the consideration of the governor's override of Bill, of governor's veto of Bill 11-36. You know, as was stated by the previous speaker, gentleman from AFME, this is not usurping the governor's authority. The governor has full authority to be able to do what she needs to do. This recognizes that there are times that the government, you know, in a state of emergency, that things need to start to get rolling. Madam Speaker, I, like I'm sure everybody else in this room, hope to God we never have to go what we've had to endure over the last 14, 15 months. And in the many years that we've been on this earth already, most emergencies don't even last 90 days. This can be considered a bill for a once-in-every-100-year event. So this is not going to assert the governor's authority to be able to respond to an emergency, you know, that we would normally, in normal times, just have to endure typhoon, earthquake, terrorist attack. Those didn't last 90 days. So what we're looking at is an event here that has actually gone over that, and wanting to participate in that process so we can do what's right for the people, for our people. I don't know about you, Madam Speaker, I just recently received a memo, a letter that you received of an executive order that was recently released. And I'm not going to get into the contents of them. As a matter of fact, great. But what this executive order basically did, for those of you who are in the 35th who worked very hard for it, is he just said, all right, despite what you said, this is what I'm going to do. And you know what? You've got no authority to say no. And she's right up to this point. You've got no authority to say no. So for those of you who fought hard for it in the previous legislature, you've got no authority to say no. Oh, by the way, she didn't even want to sign the bill. And we're going to sit here as a body and accept that. No wonder why the public was pissed off at us. There comes a point in time, sometimes when you're working in government and you're working in a system of democracy that we have, that we basically have to take a stand on certain fundamental functions that we do. That's what this bill proposes. We take a stand on our fundamental functions. Or we be rubber stamps. Your choice. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the motion? If not, the sponsor may close on the motion.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker. And I would like to thank the retiring speaker, my good friend, Senator Frank Blas Jr., for his remarks. I concur with all that he has said. And I, once again, like I said, I pray that that thought process would permeate this body, and we would get the votes. So with that, I'd like to send overridden Bill 1136 to the third reading file for consideration of voting when that time comes, Madam Speaker, to vote. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi. On the motion to place the question as to veto Bill number 11-36 COR on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are still in motions. Is there any other motion? If not, I'll recognize our assistant majority leader, Senator Shelton.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we recess until 4:00 PM on Friday.
Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries.